We have six sets of minutes to go. You can refer to your program on September 21st and October 18th. That's your table.
I'm glad you said that.
Motion is up in the second floor. All in favor, that can be called for. Any questions on the financial statements? Any public requests? Departmental reports? Rowan, you had it ready on the council?
Yeah, real quick, I don't know if you've seen news this morning or today. City of Howe participated in a multi-drug task force this morning at about 3 o'clock this morning. And we supplied two officers to help them with it. There was like 150 police officers who were invited to participate in it with the DEA, Department of Public Safety Narcotics Task Force, and several other federal narcotics task forces. They arrested 57 people, I believe it was, on a, had like 20 federal indictment warrants, and then the rest of them were state indictment warrants. It took a pretty good hunk out of the narcotics in this area. A lot of it was in South Sherman, which naturally overflows into the city of Howe. And so they made a lot of arrests, recovered a lot of narcotics, a lot of stolen property, guns, TVs, that kind of stuff. And I think they've got like 10 or 15 more people they're still looking for. But it was a pretty good, pretty good, pretty good deal for everybody concerned. So I think we were quite lucky to be invited to participate in it. But you'll probably see more of it probably at 10 o'clock news. When you get home, you'll be a chance to take a look at it. We had a pretty good month this month. We had a 43% clearance rate. Wrote 57 citations, had three verbal warnings on them. Recovered $2,850 worth of stolen property. I think you noticed we've got our new car, our cars marked now with our new markings. We have a lot of, a lot of positive comment about them from a lot of people. They like them. They keep saying, hey, you got all brand-new cars, you know? So it's pretty nice to know that. And I think even the mayor made a comment about how he liked them a lot more than what we had. We also implemented our federal grant, October 1st. And we have our grant person on board. We hired that second officer there, which was one that filled John Mayers' position. And we've had a lot of, a lot of good comments about the officers we hired. Everybody was real pleased with them, that they had come in contact with them. And they did a lot of common sense, and they're going to make us some good officers for our city here.
Are we at 100% capacity now?
Yes, we are. We have, we have our part-time person. We have all of our full-time people employed now, and we have a full complement of personnel.
So we're, we have 24-hour day coverage, seven days a week now?
Yes, we have 24-hour days, seven-day week coverage.
Are you able to check on these boys at all times?
Well, I had originally planned to implement some time changes for hours. What I planned on doing, or had already, actually had already implemented, was John Cherry's hours were going to shift where he's coming in like 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning and working overtime until like 7:00 or 8:00 in the evening. And then my hours were going to be from about 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon, about 10-hour shift. And that way, I could get direct supervision to the night person, which would give me about three or four hours with him in the mornings to work with him. The same thing in the evenings for John, to work with our evening person. And for a fact, we had actually already started flexing our hours, and John had been moving to late nights to cover for some officers that had gone to school and this kind of stuff. So I had, I had originally implemented that on October 1st. The mayor came to me, wanted me to change my hours back. He said, we only need to be working, I only need to be working an eight-hour shift, five days a week, between business hours. So I just changed all the hours back to like the work, so.
But you're already working more than an eight-hour shift then?
Yeah, today I worked, it's going to be 17 hours by the time I get out of here today. I came in this morning at 3:00, 3:00 this morning, so that we could send our officers down to work the task force, which gives them some good, some good experience, because they had never been able to participate in anything like that. So it gave them a lot of good experience that you can't pay for. You can't, you can't pay for that kind of experience.
Right. Do you feel like that you need to come in occasionally, early in the morning, like to supervise that third shift man?
Well, yeah, it's, I mean, you know, if you come in at 7:00 in the morning, and your late-night man is getting off, he's tired, he's ready, he's ready to go. You know, you can't hold him over, you're going to have to pay him overtime. So if you need to talk to him about maybe reports that are not quite right, or some little, something he's having trouble with, you know, you never get to see your night guy, your night people very much anyway, because of the hours they work. And they, they're ready to go to the house when, when time comes. The evenings, you know, you can see them a little bit when you first get there, but it's nice to know that there's somebody around that can be working with them to help them if they've got a problem with reports or whatever, you know, later in the evenings. And you can get some direct supervision and some direct instruction and training to those people like that. Makes it a whole lot simpler.
Okay. How many, how many days a week would you want to come, would you go, come in early like me?
Four days a week. That's 10-hour days. I usually come in, we're about around 4:30 in the morning. And why, why I did that was that way I could be here till 3:00, which is the normal business hours, pretty much, for what the police sprung, I mean, by I say normal business hours, but because a regular eight-hour day is 7:00 to 3:00. And the reason I said 10-hour days is well, that way I could still compete here at 3:00 in the afternoon, but yeah, I'd be coming in earlier in the morning to be with our night man, our late-night man. Anytime that I'm not here, John Cherry has been here, and he's been quite effective in handling any, any kind of minor problems we had in the city. But that, that does tend, tend to let us have a little bit better leeway with working with our, with our officers. And I believe that's what y'all wanted originally, and that's, that's why I tried to set it up that way.
But even if you are working four, 10-hour days, we're still, at no time are we ever without coverage?
Oh, no, oh, no, no. We have full coverage all the time now.
I might probably wouldn't do it myself.
I don't know if you want to know why I did it. I felt like if we needed somebody, Chief of Police here, five days a week during this hour. I had a management position like that myself. I had a third shift. I didn't have an eight-hour day job. I would come in every morning at 6:00, be in my third shift. People would be gone, but I had to be there in the plant type of wood.
I understand that, but is that your decision to tell him to do that within the council?
Yes, that's my decision. If you want to change it, you can change it.
You are over the first part of the...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, we need to put that on agenda, because I want to address that, because I think you're mistaken. That's all the questions I have, I think.
The only thing that's, you know, you know, the Chief of Police, everybody likes to come in to see him, is kind of like a preacher. You know, you pass people to sit, and everybody in the church will go see him. It's still not like the pastor. It's kind of that way with the Chief of Police, when they come in. The word of the Chief of Police, I wanted to say, I didn't want to say that.
Well, yeah, well, the reason why I did that was on the 10-hours, 10-hour days, is so that I could supervise the people. I realize there's one day there in the week, and that day's a flexible day, flexing whichever way I wanted to make it go. If I need to be like one day earlier in the week, you know, it doesn't really matter too much. It just gives me the flexibility to be able to be here with my officers at night, earlier, earlier in the morning, to work with them.
I think we asked him to do that, didn't we?
I was on the assumption that we didn't ask him to do it four days, but we asked him to supervise.
No, we did, we asked him to supervise, but he was also asking to work a four-hour week.
No, you asked him, but he's on straight salary. He works eight hours a day, or whatever it needs. And I think he understands that we had no problem with him working an hour. This is for us, coming in and working eight hours, or coming in at 6:00 or whatever.
If I was in his position, I'd be confused about if you want the supervision, or if you don't want the supervision, you know, it's kind of confusing to, you know, to ask him about what his third shift man's doing if he don't ever see, you know? And it's, it's pretty hard to supervise anyone if you don't, you don't come in contact with...
I'd see him every morning. He'll see him every morning, if he wants to.
Or do we want to pay that man to stay over?
Well, that's not an agenda item. That's, if he wants it on the agenda, which I think he said, yeah, we'll do that, and we'll discuss it then, or we can discuss that item particularly, though we don't need to be making a decision on it, because it's not, or you can have it.
Okay, City Administrator, is that all you have, Rowan?
Uh, yeah.
We need to go back and move the financial statement.
Okay. What did I just say? All right, financial statement. Did any of you have any questions on that?
Make a motion.
Anybody? Bill French seconds, all in favor? And 4/4? Okay, I'm sorry about that. I just have to go.
Thank you for your input, Ray.
Give you a quick update. As all of you know, Larry Neely's been safe for the last three years. Larry tried to come back. He had relish from doctoring. And he came in last week, worked a couple days, come back, he said, I just can't do it. So he is taking early disability retirement. And yesterday, I hired Sean Doris to take Larry's place. Sean lives over in Dennison. He's worked for the city of Dennison, he's worked for Larry Chester over in Quinsborough, he's worked for the city of Vernon. He's not rev mager with our setup, but he's not a stranger to city utilities either. We've been testing all of our fire hydrants flow in town. We had, and still have Scott Grogan on a part-time basis. We had Kirk Wertham on a part-time basis. They're both firemen of Sherman, and they're working their days off. Kirk quit in order to attend more school. But anyway, we had them testing our fire hydrant flow, marking the hydrants as to color coding. And the fire scouts have made a commitment, so I understand, to the fire department to come in and paint the fire hydrants. And we also have blue reflectors. I'm sure you've seen other towns, Sherman has them, so forth. Where the hydrants are located, there'll be a little blue reflector out in the middle of the street. They're going to put those down for us as part of their project. We have had a large cottonwood tree taken down on Quineland and Haney. We have a dead tree, 308 North Quineland, it's on city property. We'll have it taken down this next Monday, later with the man this afternoon. Our archers been here the last couple days. We have two items that make conflict some here. We had planned on not doing a whole lot of work to Young Street until the state come in and started reworking West Young, speaking of. But we have, we're going to have to go ahead and do some work. We're going to have to lower the middle of the street, roughly from Jones to Neal, and take part of Bean Street down to the very north end of it. Cars are dragging. GTE has a manhole that goes down into one of their underground vaults on West Young. Cars are beginning to drag on that manhole. I've talked with GTE about lowering it, and we'll be starting that project right after Thanksgiving. The school still does not have easements. I've talked with their attorney, who's Tanya Hines this afternoon, who can start on a water line for them until we get it. We did get some cost estimates. The low bid, and it runs out, this month, was right at $60,000 for materials that does not include sand or chlorine. But we are working on it, trying to be ready whenever they are. However, this Young Street project, that's going to delay our starting on it some if they do get the easement signed next year too. We have a first for the city of Howe. Dana was appointed city secretary about nine months ago. She's been working for about a year on schools and so forth. Come January, she will get her certification as city secretary. We have never had that before. Mary Lee had experience with us. We're, we're real proud of that, and it's taken a lot of hard work. Tomorrow, while most of you be enjoying a good Thanksgiving dinner, I'll be in Wise County at Decatur with Chalk Tower Shit, and I'll have a meeting in school out there. Y'all eat up hardly and think about me. Yeah, leave something, it might get the first red. That's all I have.
I have several things that are going on during the holidays in Howe. Friday and Saturday, the Historical Society will have their garage sale. Saturday, December the 4th, the Chamber of Commerce will have Christmas in the park with a parade at 10:00 a.m., and it will start at the high school parking lot, and then take Polaroid pictures of the kids with Santee and refreshments at Memorial Park. Sunday, December the 5th, the Historical Society will have the tour of homes, and we have three homes, and that is between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. And on December the 20th, at the high school cafeteria, there will be a community Christmas program at 7:00.
There is no old business on the agenda, so looking to see if they can figure out the, they had the info, they have the tax, and they sure get, so we'll give you some Okay. Dead for a jet serve machine, $476.50?
Ray, I recommend we reject it. We have been talking with Roy Wells. Roy is the salesman that sold us the new machine. They do not take trade-ins, but Roy said that he thought that he could get somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,000 apart. I'd like to have approval from the council if you see fit. If we can get somewhere in that neighborhood, let Roy go in and sell the cars.
Send a motion to reject the building. Now, if I'm right, you said, did any move? Carrie, all in favor?
If we weren't taking it.
Jones, I believe.
Right.
Okay. The next item on the table, thumbs up on this thing, right, is to cast the votes for the Recreation County Appraisal District Board of Directors. And I understand that's a view now, if we backed our votes in tomorrow, I think we have 16 votes, it's nothing, but there's a list in your agenda of the people who have been recommended. There's two people on there that I feel like, well, I'm sure they're all, they're all good people, but I, that the proximity of their location in your job is now. One is John Ramsey, and Roger Streton. Do y'all have, do y'all have any idea which one of these six you would like to cast our 16 votes for?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
John Ramsey has sufficient votes to be elected. The county put all their votes for him, and they had a couple hundred extra, so he, he, he will be on there.
John's in, okay, we can forget that.
They all are.
Are they all in?
According to Larry Ward.
Well, that vote's not going to make any difference.
And no.
I was going to say, there was two there, in Roger and John. John, the proximity of, for John, and, and his job, they're, they had a lot of, they had a lot of mixed up this last six months before time to set the tax rate between Appraisal District and the tax assessor. And I think it'd be good if John's on there, but they said he gonna get on there anyway. Okay. I still, I still, if I had to vote the caps, I'd cast it for, for John, if y'all do agree on it.
Do any attorneys leave me here?
They're all in anyway. They're all, all of them in. They're in, they ought to have been selected. They got enough votes for one of them. I said they'd still take it tomorrow, and we taxed it. So if y'all want to have an input, do it. If you don't, tell me you want to, you know, there's no point. You put that in form of motion, so we can go. Would anyone second that? Have a motion to abstain from voting on these, because there are, you got enough votes to get in anyway.
I'll second.
Carrie seconds, all in favor, raise your hand, and that's 4/4. Okay, appoint the park and recreation advisory board members. Who has that, Carrie, OB?
OB's chairman.
Okay.
Yeah, Guy Williams, Jim Hayes.
Well, I was told that other man lived out of the area, so I didn't contact another, but we do need one more.
They can be out of the area, that's all. They can be out of the city.
School district.
They gotta be in the school district.
School district.
Yeah, he's out in the school district.
That's what I've been told.
How many do we need?
We need one more.
One more. How about this kid, is this the kid you talked, this young man that was, has the soccer? He won some of that advisory board, the commissioner over the soccer team. He called me about four months ago or more.
What's his name?
I forgot him. I didn't write it down, huh? It made me sound like him. Don't we not share him in the school district?
Excellent.
Well, let's take, let's take care of these two that's been recommended. We'll come back with the first and later. OB, you want to put that in form of motion to those two? Okay, have a second. Then the second, all in favor, 4/4. Okay, let your team, you, Guy Williams.
Need to vote.
Yeah, we need one more.
We need one more. We'll check on this Smith, or whatever, the guy that...
David, wasn't it, the Smith?
And see if he's out of the school district. If he is, I didn't think he could coach in soccer anyway, really, but I, I feel like he's in the school. Okay, next item is to discuss yearly evaluations of department heads. That's not my agenda item. Who wants to discuss that? Who put this on the agenda? OB, what do you want to do about the evaluation?
We need to put that on ours. I think that we, I think we need to have a yearly evaluation of all our department heads. We've had two of them, I think we need to have those two, but I think we need to do that, we need to do that yearly.
Which, which other thing you got there? Judge, we got the judge, we got the...
We have the judge, chief, and Ray, David.
Well, she's, she's under him, she's not he who evaluated her. Ray is the moderator on this part, so when you want to, when you want to do that. It don't like, it, we're, you know, I'm, I'm open to it.
Well, we need the chief because he was on, it was his probation time, was it?
That was automatic, though. That's why we talked, it won't be hard.
What I'm saying, I think we need to do it yearly. You get, you get the input, you know, you know.
I don't think he's, I don't think Ray would care if he didn't evaluate. I, you know, I had, when I was working, I had evaluation every year, and I, yeah, I appreciate it, so we used to get this evaluation.
You know, we talk back and forth, and so we can get the input from them, you know?
You want to set a date? You want to set a date for, set a date for this? I think we ought to have, do it on a time when we don't have a lot of other stuff, so we can just come sit and talk.
I'm going to recommend that we do it at the time closest to whichever employee we're speaking about's anniversary date.
When's your anniversary date, Ray?
August 1st.
Then we'll have to do it for next meeting, or his past, or recent one, or the one that just passed. Would you agree with that?
If we, if we do it in the leasing district, like we give it more different rates, I think, I think everybody can learn a lot from this. I think it's good.
I think it needs to be done, and very soon from now, with regard to this year. Next year, we'll do it sometime in August.
That's the first January we have to do.
That's fine.
All right, let's, let's set a date, put a, put it, the first two weeks, a week or two in January, we'll get back next meeting and discuss it again, but you want to, you want to make a motion to set a, to put this on record, to set a date for it, or set a, how you going to do it, OB? January 6th, you, first week of June in January?
Anytime, I'm with. Council's disposed of 24-hour date. Is there a date, Roy?
We, we need a motion from somebody to, to make this on, that...
Before we set this in concrete with regard to January, we're talking about one specific time and one specific person. As this city grows, we may have more departments and more department heads. If we make this a motion that we are going to evaluate these people either annually, at a date to be predetermined at that time, or whatever, but if we set this towards January, we hire somebody in December and got to evaluate them again in January, you seem like, you see what I'm saying?
I wasn't, I didn't mean everybody in January, it was about a race, since it's...
I understand. We need to vote to have the evaluation before we, before we set a specific date.
We don't have to set a specific date, we do need to kind of, if y'all want to have the evaluation for all the departments once a year, that's what I'm trying to get, okay? OB, you make that motion that we evaluate the department heads once a year? Okay. Bill, Frank, say, all in favor, Ray, 4/4. We'll, we'll work next month.
Right.
Okay, set the date for December, council meeting. What, what is controversy with that? Hold on, y'all, just, I have...
Recommend it to be the 21st.
Let's make it on the 14th, that's it, y'all. Put somebody, get a motion made on the 14th instead of the 21st. OB move? Any second, all in favor, Ray, 4/4. Approve the Howe Community Facility Development Board budget for 1999 and 2000. I have a copy of that, and we... And the total amount of money that's been there from our action. We have to set a budget. Even though we haven't spent any money and we don't have, we, we felt like that, uh, office expenses and, and we already, they have all this with our city already, but it has to be out. Uh, cash balance amount is eighty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, fifty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight then. And this, this thirty-two thousand expected revenue from ninety-nine, three thousand, I was looking at. How many, is this done ten full of years or a year and a half?
It started in, uh, October, uh, but we did not get any money until, uh, I believe it was either December or January, uh, two years ago.
You know, this, this is the budget that they have set, we need your approval or disapproval, whichever way you want to. Y'all lose, everybody Joe, second, all in favor of President budget, four for, none against. Okay, uh, the next item is, uh, consider request by Chief TC to use police vehicles and one officer for December the fifth, the Salvation Army tourist for that, I don't think you have any problem with that, that's just. A motion for Carrie and the second for Bill, all in favor? Okay, uh, four for, none against. Uh, discuss reporting a franchise compensation allocation formula required by H P seventeen seventy-seven and the P U C. And, uh, that is one thing I, I can't look at that wrong, we don't know yet how we're gonna, how we're gonna go, when we're gonna set the way for them to take it or, or pay it or, or go with state average or whatever Ray has from information, it, it probably didn't know it.
You got more, uh, confusing paperwork than anything else. But, uh, I have talked with Giles Brown. Giles is the, uh, financial officer for City of Sherman. He has been to school in Austin on this. And, uh, Giles says that, uh, he thinks Sherman is off size, that, uh, they are going to calculate, uh, their own. Uh, he said, he felt like that it would benefit most everyone in the, uh, smaller cities to let, uh, the U C calculate the, uh, rate. But what, for those of you, does everyone know what I'm talking about? Okay, we have a franchise with all of the utility companies. Uh, they don't pay, uh, tax. They pay franchise fee rather than, uh, tax. The telecommunications, uh, has gotten together with, uh, P U C. They're throwing out the, uh, franchise agreements, even though we have them. This pertains only to telecommunications. They have three different, uh, ways that you can go here, three different options, uh. One is, uh, and where we fall in is a municipality that was in existence January twelfth nineteen ninety-nine and had an effective franchise agreement or ordinance regarding compensation for the C T Ps on January twelfth nineteen ninety-nine and located within a county of population of more than twenty-five thousand and was not involved in litigation relating to franchise fees with one or more of the C T Ps during any part of nineteen ninety-eight. That's the only one we fit in. The others, uh, is, if you have, uh, litigation, if you're under, uh, twenty-five thousand in the, uh, county, uh, if you did not have a, uh, franchise agreement with on January twelfth nineteen ninety-nine. We can figure a, uh, base from our, uh, amount that we received in nineteen ninety-eight and go from there, or we can do nothing. Uh, what happens if a city does not file a proposed allocation? If city does not file proposed allocation, P U C will have staff, establish the allocation among the customer class of access lines for that city. Chris Brown, uh, thinks that's the way, uh, that would be best because that way the P U C is establishing it. You don't have to worry about, well, did we do it right? Are they coming back with a, another, uh, formula, or are they, uh, refusing that one or whatever? If you do not like it, that particular one, if you abstain, you can change it one time within each twenty-four months.
I think probably I'll go to state average, P U C, you want to flip that up anyway?
Yep.
And, and the reason I look at it, I think the big cities gonna take care of themselves, just like Sherman, Dallas, and all that, and, and that's going to compute an average. And I think if we go state average, we can't be hurt.
I called Wayne Cummins at Van Alstine, see what they were going to do, and, uh, Wayne said, well, you beat me to the phone call, I was fixing to call you the same day.
Y'all wanna go state average, you wanna go, you wanna try to cut your.
We need a motion.
Yep.
We'll make a motion.
I think so.
I think so.
Have a motion, Mr. Joe. Second, O B. To use the state average, all in favor of the motion, four for. Okay, we have some resolutions we need to adopt.
Ray, before you do, we have representative from TXU here, uh, Rick Haney has been, uh, certain as, as our representative, and I believe he's, uh, transferred down toward Lamar County. Is that right, Martha?
But he's added Lamar County.
Okay, this is Martha Dormand. She will be our, uh, new representative for, uh, TXU.
Mayor, remember, as a city council, I wanted to come before you today, so, uh, I've met several of you, I've been in the area four or five years. They have added a few more towns under my hat, so I do have eight towns in Grayson County that I do work with. And I've been with, uh, with TXU for twenty-eight years, and it has been a wonderful experience, and my move here has, uh, greatly enhanced my life. I feel like the, the quality of life in Grayson County is, is very positive and that you do have a great place to live and work in, and I look forward to working with you. Like Ray said, Rick Haney is still in the area, he is an account manager. He not only has the territory that he did serve with us, uh, here out of the Texoma District, he is also serving Paris, which, um, the Paris area, which does include Sopper Springs, so, uh, he will be on the road quite a bit, but we will still see him around here, and he still will be working with me in different, um, areas that we do provide, uh, our services, so I'm delighted to be here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
The, the resolution on the agenda is, is just like we've always gone through, we have, uh, the railroad commission or they have to, to address the railroad commission when they ask for something of this nature. And what we usually do is, is work as a coalition and make sure that what is being asked for is appropriate and that these people can make money and that we can pay a lot of our price for gas, so. What we have here is asking you to approve this resolution. I'm letting special counsel and Ray experts look at this before we accept it. I have a motion by Bill Frank. Which one of y'all raised your hand first, did it?
Give it to me.
The second, all in favor, raise your hand, three or four, none against. Okay. Public hearing, next. Consider planning zoning recommendations concerning the Texas West Gate, uh, this is already the, the zoning has already been approved, this is a, the way I understand it, a site plat, approval only, Frank, should you wanna say anything about this, Frank, or you?
Sure, I'd be happy to talk about it all the time.
Let me, let me, before you do that, uh, let me say that, uh, the P and Z met last night to take care of this, they, they made, and then we made the next one. They did not have a form, so I guess it's in our hands now to go ahead and, and hold these people up again. But anyway, tell us what you're, you're, but they're already working, now, aren't they?
Yeah, well, what, what we're doing is, this will be the final phase of the project, basically. And this is unusual property, this is the property where the creek used to just dump and just sit in a pool. So try to make best use of the land and also people, neighbors' concerns to make something that work for everybody. What we did was, this is, here's, we're gonna basically put in a man-made dry creek bed here, this is here. The whole property's gonna be terraced, the stair steps, stair steps come in from the creek. So the people who live here will not actually see us, 'cause we're gonna be below grade even up at this point. We have an eight-foot privacy fence going down this entire perimeter that all the way down the front. So in other words, the roofs, even of this leg of the stair steps shouldn't even see the height of the fence. Uh, we also lay this out, which is unusual, like I'm not sure if it's one of these in Texas, we laid it out like residential subdivision. Notice there's a street and a house and a house and a street. So it was just like any, any other subdivision neighborhood in the area, really, it's just a pretty much unique. Beyond that, of course, with this, you go, in other words, when you're driving down Seventy-Five now, we have an eight-foot fence out front, you see diagonally behind it, right, unless you're right side and front. Now, that fence will go all the way down the side, so you won't see that anymore, it'll look more complete, the fence will actually run the whole way. And then also, not, not even intended, but this, this is part of what all we're doing, you know, when we did this phase here, we got into the whole dump area that he had to the left of the entrance, when you're in there, we got all that out. And we cleaned all that down, we're gonna seed it with grass, it's not wet enough to have it grow yet, and we're gonna make that into a park, and just make that a nice area. Then we're also putting a sandblasted sign, we're trying to do lights in the entry and everything, just finish up the whole project, some more landscaping.
Do you have plans of the new fence you just put up, Highway five, will it continue all the way north to your property line?
Well, it, it already is. And we're done, that's.
In the old face, in other words, will it continue north?
Oh, the old side, yeah, we can look at that, it is a, you had, you had, you know, we'll do whatever we need to do to make it a little more cohesive with the neighbors and everything else.
I understand on that, on that fence that you told us last time, I believe you go back and get the minutes, it was gonna be all the way up. This is what we had, the two property owners, I think they're cousins, that you didn't, this fence is understanding what you're.
We can do that in the old side.
And I, I was wondering, who I proved that, I wouldn't prove this here, I wouldn't vote to prove this, if you're not gonna do this, but I believe you did, Ray did.
Well, that's, that's.
He, I understand, and all we have to do is remind him, play for getting it out here, there's no.
I had a problem with that this morning.
In the old park, in the old park on Highway five?
One on that, where the fence was?
Little taming starting to lay out there.
We, we just did not understand.
Yeah, that's. I just figured.
I'm real pleased with the way the new place looks.
Thank you, really, thank you. Actually, we're, 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 it's got towers or nothing, two days ago, we've already got, we've already got five in, and she's got, I think, eight souls, so we're actually, we're looking at having that section filled by summer. And then this thing, you know, you take so much dirt work, it'll take us until about summer to do dirt work. We're not gonna bring any fill in, which is the usual we have, but we're gonna actually go in and build stair steps.
Another feature of this, most of the, uh, homes will be running the length with the street. They'll have a wide front, the, uh, the lots will average about a hundred feet in, uh, street width, except the ones right down on the service road.
This, this side, but these will look like a regular subdivision, in other words, you'll have, yeah, now that this may move back down to any regular subdivision. Another plus is, from a drainage standpoint, you've got the culvert that goes on the freeway.
Here.
This will actually direct water into that, whereas right now it just kinda sits, and then if it just happens to get high enough, it goes over the top of that pit down to that five, this will actually give you greater flow, and you bet if there is ever a huge, huge drainage flood or something, it'll actually drain right, right straight into the freeway. So we think it's actually, you know, is ideal use of everything.
Good. What we did, I think the chairman of the P and Z, the vice admiral, said, hey, you know, y'all go ahead and tell the council, go ahead and act, we didn't have a form, no problem. Uh, just being a public hearing on this item, I, you know, looking really hard, and I didn't come for it, 'cause there's nobody here either to come for it, so I recommend we go ahead and make this present.
And that's the only thing, that's the only thing that I had a problem with, 'cause I had some neighbors asking about that, you know, why did they quit there, and I hope that we look along the way.
I'm more than happy to.
We have a motion, do you want to second the motion since you.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion second to do this, and, and you take Frank for it, we don't have.
You show it, it's actually, you want, it'll run down.
If you don't have anything he told us he could do, and no question, so. Okay, that passes. Another, uh, part of the public hearing is ordinance number five thirteen regarding the regulation food establishment, Mr. Marshall, you wanna talk to him for a minute about that?
I certainly will. Good evening, Mayor Houston, I'm sorry, Mayor Bloodso. Mr. Houston, city council members. My name is Marshall Ward, I work with the Grayson County Health Department, I work in the capacity as a health inspector, I've been employed with Grayson County since May of nineteen ninety-three. On behalf of the Grayson County Health Department this evening, I'm here to present to the city of Howe a new, excuse me, fee increase proposal. What this will pertain to, especially for the city of Howe, it will affect our food service establishments. The reason why that I'm presenting these proposed fee increases to you this evening, between myself and the other inspectors within the Health Department, for the past two years, we have come to the realization that our con, or the services which we render to food service establishments, public, semi-public, public facilities in some cert, in fact, in most circumstances do exceed the cost of the current health permit fees assessed by the Grayson County Health Department. The last time any health permit fees were increased by the Commissioner's Court was back in nineteen eighty-three. So we felt like at this time that it may be more appropriate to take a look at increasing some of the health permit fees at this time. Currently, for food service establishments, we have nine separate fee structures for individual operators throughout Grayson County. What we have opted to do under this new fee increase proposal is to break this down into two separate fee structures. The way this will be based upon now, any establishment which employs from one to five employees, it will go currently from the fifty dollars to one hundred dollars. Any food service establishment which employs six or more will pay a flat fee, annual fee of one hundred and fifty dollars. As I go down the list, some other changes which we have proposed at this time, for temporary events, temporary food establishments, we'll still keep the fee intact at twenty-five dollars. Let me strongly emphasize to you, this has been the main concern with other municipalities throughout Grayson County, they want us to ensure that we'll keep nonprofit organizations such as religious, the Howe Four-H, Howe Lions Club. Any organization which is classified as nonprofit will not be assessed any type of health permit fee, regardless if it's for an annual health permit or for a temporary event. So we'll still keep that intact where there will be no permit fee assessed to these organizations. Some other, um, fee increases which we have worked proposing this evening, for food handler permit fees, these are designated for food service employees, they're not designated as managers. We have proposed this fee increase from nine dollars to fifteen dollars, still for a three-year permit fee. For food service managers, we're still keeping the same permit fee intact at twenty-five dollars for a three-year certification. Some other changes which we've made, for plan reviews, for any new food establishment, or any food establishment which is receiving any type of extensive remodeling, we're talking about at least twenty percent or more of the establishment. we're talking about at least twenty percent or more of the establishment actually being remodeled. In the past, we've done it based on the amount of square footage of food preparation area. In the past, it ranged anywhere from nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents to one hundred dollars. Under the new proposed fee structure, it would be a flat fee of seventy-five dollars across the board. For food establishments, in the past, we have always assessed a surcharge fee for any food establishment which submitted their health permit application form and their method of payment past their month of expiration. What we're proposing under this new fee increase proposal is to have simply a flat fee of fifty dollars. In the past, it would be either a fifty percent fee or one hundred percent fee based on the amount of time they paid after the month of expiration on their current health permit. So, one of your pool permits, let me go back to one more, reopening fee. In the past, we have never assessed a reopening fee anytime we've had to suspend a food service establishment's health permit due, for example, to unsanitary conditions. Uh, if there's a, mainly due to unsanitary conditions, in the past, it's been our experience, anytime you have to suspend a food service establishment's operational health permit due to unsanitary inspections, it only requires at least one or two follow-up inspections to go behind it, which takes time out of our busy schedules. Many times this requires at least half a day of our regular schedule just to make sure that we go back to these particular establishments which we have suspended their health permits to make sure that they're in full compliance prior to reshooting or reinstating their current health permit. So, what we're proposing under this new, excuse me, proposed fee structure is to assess fifty percent of their annual health permit fee in order for these establishments to reopen. The way we look at this, hopefully it will give some of these operators or make them think twice about taking care of business in the first place. That way they can realize from this point on, hopefully, that if they do have their health permit suspended by the Grayson County Health Department in order for them to reopen again, again, we will impose a fifty percent reopening fee or half the price of their regular health permit fee itself. Swimming pool permit fees, at this time, this will not pertain to the city of Howe. The only municipalities throughout Grayson County which have their own municipal ordinances for swimming pools are the cities of Dennison and Sherman at this time. So, again, you, do you have anyone, anybody, that's news to us? Okay, that's great to hear. I'll be sure and pass along to David Rubiano, he's gonna be our health inspector that oversees all the public and semi-public pool facilities within Grayson County. We're proposing at this time, under the current fee structure, it's sixty dollars for one pool or spa and twenty-five dollars for each additional pool or spa, excuse me. Under the new proposed fee, it'd be one hundred dollars for the first pool or spa and forty dollars for each additional pool or spa itself.
You don't have to tell everybody that we cut it on one.
Okay. Okay. I, I simply didn't know that. The Grayson County Health Department, item number eight, for swimming pool training class. This is something that is strictly on a voluntary basis, but in the past, we have always assessed a thirty-five dollar training fee. This consists of a half-day course and is offered to all swimming pool operators and managers throughout Grayson County. We've always imposed a thirty-five dollar fee. Under the new proposed fee, we'll still keep that intact, so there will not be an increase. And again, this particular class is strictly on a voluntary basis. In the past, we have never assessed a swimming pool lake surcharge fee. What we're proposing under this new fee structure is a fifty dollar surcharge fee if they let their pool permit go past the month of expiration. Are there any questions you may have concerning these new proposed fees?
Has the commissioner's court already?
Yes, sir, they have. In fact, municipalities which have currently passed this new fee structure, commissioner's court gave their consent this past week. Cities of Dennison, Sherman, Van Alstine, cities of Tioga, Collinsville, South Nade, Potsboro, and Vales have already adopted this fee structure. And what we're trying to do is to keep everything standardized for every municipality throughout Grayson County. That way we don't have to have two separate health permit application forms and it does make our jobs much easier in the long run to, to ensure that everyone is completely standardized throughout the county.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
What y'all's, what y'all's, uh?
Are you saying if y'all a pool, you have to get a permit?
This is only for public or semi-public pools. For example, in Sherman, like Fairview Pool, that's classified as a public pool. Any apartment, any duplex, that is classified as a semi-public pool facility. But for people's own residential pools, we do not regulate.
But nonprofit is still no charge?
Absolutely.
So, the historical deciding decides to have a bean supper, I can get a temporary permit?
Absolutely.
Somebody want to give a motion, one where there?
I'm with the.
I don't quite understand, well, you want to pass the ordinance for, who's getting the money?
It goes directly to the health department itself.
This has been going on, they'll be, the only thing, the only thing new that does, that will, would affect us is, is swimming, for the ordinance. They've had the health inspection for all the businesses and permits, they've been having to.
Pay increase.
To buy these fees. The only thing different that I see out of all of this is since we regulate our own swimming pools and, uh, we fall under that category, so that, if you don't, well, we're out for another year.
That's what, that's what I'm trying to figure out here, you, uh, to raise these fees and we don't get none of the fees and, uh, you have the inspections anyway, right?
That's correct.
Then why do we need that? Why do we need that then?
We pay the health department.
See, each municipality contracts with the Grayson County Health Department to conduct all sanitary inspections. That way it enables these municipalities not having to hire their own health inspectors.
That's good. Been good, you just said that start.
Just one word of comment, I already had this thing to do with increasing this issue or not, but I know that the health department as a whole, that's really had their budget cut. They're, they're having to turn away some people, I understand, and, and change up the, the way they handle business. And I'm sure that all this is tied together to the health department. They're digging tunnels, right?
That's a good question.
I've been, I've been hearing this, that, now she went and asked the commissioner's court for extra money because they weren't able to take care of all of the services they had. And I think they changed some fees on the flu shots and, and new pneumonia shots and all that kind of stuff. I feel like that, that this is probably all tied together, the reason the fees are going up some, and I'm not backed in, I mean, I don't, you know what it takes to run the health department?
That's correct.
This is not, we just look at this as swimming pools and, and restors and all, but he's, what he's talking about is the whole health department. They all sharing a budget and I'm sure that, I feel confident that's the reason some of the fees are going up.
Also, it's due to administrative costs, mileage expenses, salaries on top of that.
Anyway, we have a motion.
Shots for the kids.
Yes. Right. Well, a lot of it's been, they was working off the state grant, it was that anyway. Three years ago, when they cut out the shots for tots. You know, they had a new state program on, and they even got a plan, and maybe it's just a tiny little door down the city, the city. They got funds cut on that, I think the grants, tie it out like a lot of other grants. But anyway, anybody else have any more questions before we do something? One where there? Kerry, did you make a motion?
You did.
Dale and Kerry, either one first. All in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be in the public hearing. Well, we're in the public hearing now, we need to vote, and you've already voted, so we're okay. Is that the last item on the, I do believe it is. Uh, don't forget, you guys and girls, tomorrow at lunch, we're gonna dig out. We're gonna dig out, so y'all come as you can and. Okay, for the, y'all.